Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 9th special meeting and workshop session. Public comment on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to public comment at LewistonMaine.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And our sessions are still being conducted remotely, and members will only participate electronically. And the meeting can be viewed online at www.LewistonMaine.gov/2020cc. With that said, if the clerk could call the roll for attendance.
Sure, councillor from word one.
Present.
Word two. Word three.
Present.
Word four.
Present.
Word five.
Present.
Word six.
Present.
And word seven.
Present.
Also, we'll note for the record that Mayor Kair is present, as well as the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, the finance director, and myself as clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business is an update on city actions regarding the COVID-19 pandemic.
Evening, Mayor and city councillors. I will be brief tonight. We have just a few updates. First, beginning Monday, June 15th, City Hall will move from an appointment-only model to opening up to the public, taking very similar approach with limiting the number of folks in at any given time, and we will, like I said, begin that on June 15th. The last day of appointments during the daytime hours will be Friday. They'll be taken for Friday, June 12th, so this Friday will be the last day. But so Monday, we moved to that. Also, this past Monday, I'm sure you've heard, but just to make sure, if you haven't, the library did begin pickup service this past Monday, and it's open Monday through Friday with slots, time slots between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., and another time slot between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. Appointments can be made to pick up and drop off your library items. So we're moving forward, still continuing to move forward to, you know, opening up our offices, and it's just another step in that direction.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question that came to me was about the wellness shelter and its plan to originally close on June 30th, and what the status of that is, I'm checking in.
Sure. We have been having some discussions with the shelter in discussing that transition plan, and I think our expectation is to continue to finalize those plans with them and have an update for the city council at the next council meeting.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, councillor Khalid.
Dennis, I've heard some conversations that at the shelter, there are people outside of Lewiston who are using the shelter. Can you just tell us, is there a way to track to track who's using the shelter, such as like maybe collecting addresses or, you know, collecting any kind of personal information to know that the people using the shelter are from Lewiston?
So, yes, we do have that. The shelter is tracking that information as part of their intake process. They are gathering that information. I do not have that, you know, information directly in front of me. We certainly could get some additional report-out information for the council and share that. But I know they are, like I said, as part of the intake information, they are asking the last known address for the individuals.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number one.
Item number one, resolve calling for the fair, direct federal emergency funding to municipalities in support of reopening and rebuilding local American economies. Requested action to approve the resolve calling for the fair, direct federal emergency funding to municipalities in support of reopening and rebuilding local American economies.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Jensen, and if I could ask Ed to present on that.
Sure, I think you're all aware that to date, the federal government has adopted a number of actions to try to address the COVID-19 epidemic. Most of those have been to provide funding to offset costs directly associated with response. There is legislation that's been introduced in both the House and the Senate. There are somewhat different versions, and I know councillor Ray and I have participated on a number of phone conferences or teleconferences with our legislative delegation in Washington, talking about that legislation, and in particular, the issues that local governments are facing and state government with dramatic reductions potentially in our operating revenue. To date, none of the assistance that's being provided really assists in operating costs. So there is an effort to try to find a way to provide some of that funding. And in the last conversation, which was with Senator Snow, she has introduced bipartisan legislation in the Senate that is a little bit less generous than the House version, but certainly would be very, received very well, I think, by municipalities. And she suggested that it would be helpful for the city to go formally on record requesting that some direct operating assistance be provided. So the idea here is this, like the resolve is more or less follows a pattern set by the National League of Cities in their conversations with legislators in Washington, and it would simply put us on record supporting efforts to provide some real operating assistance to try to avoid, number one, as we've already seen, eliminating positions in local government, and hopefully putting some of those back and avoiding any additional potential needs for layoffs or reduction in services.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray.
I just wanted to echo Ed's, Mr. Mayor's sentiment that the two senators we spoke to and then Congressman Golden's office were really receptive to having these conversations and hearing directly from municipalities, and so I think by going on the record, as Mr. Mayor has suggested, just continues to send the signal that we need relief and we need it now because we're not quite seeing it in the same way that the CARES Act has allocated to state and educational governments.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Sure, councillor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number two.
Item number two, resolve supporting local restaurants seeking to reopen for inside dining. Requested action to approve the resolve supporting local restaurants seeking to reopen for inside dining.
Okay, thank you. And do you know, Madam Clerk, if this resolve and the attached letter was placed on the packet at a later date, or has?
Yes, yes, it has been added to the city's website and included under item number two as the background material. That was done this afternoon by our IT department, so that should be available on our website.
Okay, good, thank you very much. So recently, I was contacted by a local restaurant who claimed, and that was Mr. Welch from Pedro's, and he shared with me that he was working with other local restaurants in the area. He provided a letter that I think has been provided to the council, basically indicating that they would follow all of the CDC guidelines, both state and federal, and he indicated that there are areas actually that they would exceed the federal guidelines and the state guidelines. When reviewing his letter and then looking at the businesses that are allowed to be open right now, there are many areas that have many more people than we, that they believe would be in restaurants. It's going to be a priority of them to, you know, whenever possible, utilize outside dining and takeout service, but they're asking with the precautions that they're willing to take, that they could provide service to their customers, keep employees working in a way that is just as safe as any business that has been allowed to be open. Once I was convinced that their commitment to keeping Lewiston residents safe and their employees safe, I agreed to bring this before the council for our thoughts and discussion, and I would encourage us to seriously consider the resolve. As you can see, it's not a demand upon the governor. It's really basically asking the governor to identify ways that she can work with the restaurants to allow them to have a full reopening with the added precautions. With that said, I'll turn it over to the council for discussion or comments.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Councillor Clement.
There's no motion on the floor, I believe, at this time.
Very good, I jumped at that, so I entertain a motion first.
So moved.
I'll move the motion.
Okay. Yep, moved by councillor Clement and seconded by councillor LaJoy. And with that, I'll now turn it over to the council for discussion. Councillor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I find it somewhat amusing how time changes things. It's said that when you see, what you see depends on where you stand. Last month, this body had an opportunity to be heard requesting a measured and reasonable response from our governor. This was defeated then, and now we're here again, being asked to approve a somewhat stronger resolution. My only regret is that we have let three weeks pass without taking affirmative action on behalf of our constituents. Those controlling the lockdown have continued to drag things out unnecessarily while claiming their actions are based on science. Even our own CDC director mistakenly said at a briefing yesterday that irresponsible people who've engaged in recent protests while shouting unmasked were spreading the bacteria that caused COVID-19. Now, science says a bacterium and a virus are two totally different things. If COVID-19 were caused by bacteria, we would not have suffered through the measures put forth thus far, as an antibiotic could have been employed to wipe out the entire thing. Today, the public health gurus came forth and said that asymptomatic persons cannot spread COVID-19, a complete reversal of their previous position. Things are changing daily and continuing to highlight the gross errors made to date. But enough digression. Meanwhile, back at the ranch, local businesses such as our restaurants continue to suffer. There are those on the list supporting this resolution that have said they cannot last another 30 days. They will be forced to fold and close forever. Enough is enough. It's high time we come together and support all our businesses and citizens, as called for by both the United States and Maine constitutions, which we are, as elected representatives, swore to observe and uphold. Therefore, I emphatically support this resolution with the only caveat being that it does not go far enough in its mission. I encourage my colleagues to step up to the plate and get the ball rolling again. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clement. Councillor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supportive of this measure, so I will vote in favor of it, but I just want to say that I firmly believe that the city of Lewiston, including us in the council, have relied on science, medicine, and experts for making all of our decisions, and I firmly stand by the decisions that we've made.
Thank you, councillor Jensen. Councillor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm referencing the letter from the restaurant owners of Lewiston, and a couple of quick questions. I noticed that there's 12 Lewiston restaurants listed on this particular document. Did all of them have an opportunity to join forces and be part of this, or just these 12?
So I believe there were others that they attempted to contact, but because of timing, they haven't been able to, but I think through previous discussions, they're confident that several others probably would have gotten on board, but I can't speak to that with factual information.
Okay, and then my second quick question is, I appreciate the 12 bullets that are highlighted, looking at or are outlining, rather, what these owners are prepared to do. Earlier, when you rolled this out, you talked about the fact that some of these bullets are above and beyond what would be expected. Can you, could you tell me what those are on this list? I mean, there's some that seem like no, pretty obvious to me, but you had mentioned earlier that there's some that are beyond what would be expected.
Right, so let me just quickly go through it. So I believe the hand sanitizes in the bathrooms. I believe they'll provide protective barriers at areas that are not required. And I think limiting the parties down to eight is also a step above, and those are the ones that I can speak of right off quick.
Okay.
I think the others appear to be, for the most part, standard requirements. And I did have a conversation with restaurants about attempting to exceed the six-foot distance, but I see that they included it at the six-foot distance.
And then I had one final quick question, if I could just ask about the point-of-contact index card point, what that is more about?
So basically, they would leave, and I think that one exceeds as well, but I'm not sure of that, but basically, there would be cards at all the tables so that as guests sat there, they would fill them out so that there would be a way to, you know, contact folks if there was a positive test at any point.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the other councillor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, this is one I'm having a hard time with, given that there's, you know, businesses at stake here. I think we have done quite, quite a lot to try to accommodate folks, and I realize it just hasn't been enough. But I am still leaning toward, towards not voting in favor of this motion, just given the facts that I believe to be true. But I am very curious, Mr. Mayor, in the prior agenda item, I'm not sure if we went to the public, will we be taking public comment on this item?
Yes, I mean, if anyone raises their hand. Yep.
I'd love to hear from the public.
Specifically asked that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would, I would just love to hear from the public if there's anyone out there with an opinion to help us, help the body inform its decision. There's a hand, so.
So I do now see that a hand has popped up, so if we could allow Mr. Miller to speak. Hello, Mr. Miller.
Hi, log speak.
Yes, sir, please go ahead. So, Mr. Miller, okay, are you all set? Can you hear us? Mr. Miller, can you hear us?
Anyone hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Okay, I, 38 years spent in the restaurant business, from a dishwasher up to a manager and all that, and up to an owner. The point I want to bring up is a lot of restaurants exceed state laws because they're expected, inspected at least once a year by the state and at least once a year by the city. So you got to remember, they have a lot of systems in place for safety and sanitation above and beyond what most businesses have. So they're a step above as far as sanitation goes because they've been doing it for many, many years.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. And I see a hand raised from Mr. Bannister. Hi, Mr. Bannister, if you can hear me, you're all set to speak. You just have to unmute yourself, which I believe is star nine if you're on the phone. Hello, Mr. Bannister, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, I'm also, I'm not sure if it's star nine or star six, and I honestly, I'm blanking out at the moment, but if Mr. Bannister also, if he's on the phone, if he wants to try star six as well.
It doesn't, so it doesn't appear that he's on, actually on the phone. It looks like he's probably on a computer. Mr. Bannister, can you hear me? Dennis, oh, there we go. Mr. Bannister, can you hear me? And we'll give one more attempt. Mr. Bannister, can you hear me?
So I actually just got a message from Mr. Bannister in our Q and A. He says there's no place to unmute ourselves on the computer, so it's clear he's having some difficulty unmuting himself, and it looks like, appears to be on his end at this point, because he is unmuted at this point in here, so clearly there's some, some issue on his end, so I'll, oh. I mean, it's Renee, it's actually not a Steve, it's Renee is the person that's trying to speak.
And in the bottom left-hand corner, there should be a microphone on her screen, if she can see that. That's where she would unmute herself? Renee, can you hear me? So Renee, if you can hear me, if you can use the chat, just like you contacted Assistant City Administrator Dotay, and you could type in your thoughts.
She says, make sure I'm not muted myself. She does say, yes, I hear you, no place to unmute, just sharing. So I think we probably want to move on to saying, I hope Steve will speak, so let's, I would try to, I guess, move on. Mayor, at this point, it doesn't look like they're able to get in.
Okay. If we can just try to remind her, though, that if she typed in a question or a comment on chat, that would be brought back to us.
So, Mayor, I, well, she did, just as that happened, a message did come in, and I think the comment that they're looking to make is just because a restaurant is open, it doesn't force those who don't feel comfortable to go out to eat.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Anything else in the comment section, Dennis, from anyone else?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word one.
No.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
No.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Thank you, and word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to two.
Okay, thank you. Although that concludes the two items in our special meeting, I have agreed to allow councillor Khalid to introduce a resolution that will be coming before the city council at our next business meeting for consideration and discussion by the council. So councillor Khalid, if you could briefly introduce that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss the resolution that I have put forward.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion by councillor Khalid, seconded by councillor Ray. Is there, there's no discussion on that, correct, Madam Clerk?
I guess there could be if the law opposed to having the rule suspended.
Okay, thank you. So is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
Question on order, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one sec, councillor Khalid, go ahead, councillor Clement.
This motion is just to suspend the rules and nothing else at this time?
It's to suspend the rules to discuss the, discuss the resolution, councillor Khalid?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so it would be for only discussion purposes with no vote. Is that correct, councillor Khalid?
Yes, so the motion I made is just to discuss the resolution that I have put forward and for next Tuesday to take a vote.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the motion? Or comment? Councillor Khalid, hold on, please. Councillor Patengill.
Just only comment, I support, you know, us discussing something as important as this. I feel it may have benefited the council if there was more than a couple-hour window before this was broached on everybody, I could say.
Yeah, so, but just keep in mind that this will be discussed again at the next meeting, when it's there for action.
True, but we know, nobody had time to prepare for this, so to have, you know, input on the discussion.
Okay. And I really think the discussion is more councillor Khalid presenting it to us, and then councillors can decide whether they want to discuss it more thoroughly tonight or wait till that item's on the agenda. All right, any other questions or comments from councillors on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and we got to take a vote, so just keep that in mind, councillor.
Yeah, I would, I would like to start the discussion by reading the resolution.
Okay, so let's vote on, let's vote on your motion first. Okay, so I don't see any other questions or comments, so all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Sorry, so councillor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start the discussion by first reading the resolution. Resolve condemning all use of excessive and unreasonable force in the use of racial profiling by police and committing the city of Lewiston to achieving equality and equal justice for all in its policing practices, policies, and tactics. Whereas criminal charges have been filed against a number of Minneapolis, Minnesota police officers for the murder of George Floyd on May 25th, 2020. And whereas millions of Americans, thousands of Mainers, and hundreds of Lewiston residents of all races and ethnic backgrounds have responded to George Floyd's murder with peaceful protests, recognizing that Black Lives Matter, and calling for the reform of police policies, procedures, and tactics that have contributed to this and other similar deaths in this country. And whereas George Floyd's murder was not an isolated incident in our countries for 100 years of his, of history of brutality and discrimination against people of color. Whereas according to a 2018 study from the University of Michigan, Luther's University and Washington University, police use of force is the 60th leading cause of death for young black men, and black men in general are about 2.5 times more likely to be killed by police than white men. And whereas, as is the case through our country, Lewiston has a long and troubled history of racial, religious, and ethnic hatred and division, including a Ku Klux Klan cross-burning, targeting Catholics in 1924, and periodic anti-immigrant incidents that continue until today. And whereas, at the same time, many in this community have consistently spoken out against such hate and discrimination and continue to do so in regard to the unjust murder of Mr. Floyd and other minorities. And whereas the Lewiston Police Department does not currently reflect the racial demographics of the community it serves, and whereas the Lewiston City Council has a moral obligation to stand for justice and build a community where all people, including people of color, can live and breathe freely. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lewiston City Council affirms and acknowledges that Black Lives Matter, condemns all acts and acts of excessive police force, use of force, brutality, and racial profiling throughout the country, in Maine and in Lewiston, recognizes that the Lewiston Police Department has had a longstanding policy that does not authorize its officers to use chokeholds or strangleholds. Commission a community review board to conduct a, conduct a comprehensive review of the Lewiston Police Department's use of force policy. of the Lewiston Police Department's use of force policies to ensure that they reflect their best and most appropriate practices. And commits to providing the necessary resources to ensure that all city staff, including certified Lewiston police officers, receive anti-bias training. And that police officers also receive crisis de-escalating training. And directs the Police Department, in concert with minority communities, expand efforts to recruit and hire individuals from minority communities in an effort to redress the current demographic imbalance within the department. And finally, support youth and community programs, including social services and public health. And reaffirms the ongoing work of the Poverty Awareness Committee to address the impact of generational poverty on Lewiston student, on Lewiston school students, and the citywide work of the City Spirit Council. And corporation with diverse community partners to create a citywide equity statement.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Khalid. Is there anything you'd like to add?
After, if any council has something to say or they want to discuss, I would like to go last, if that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I imagine I'll have more to say during next week's discussion when we take the vote, but I'm certainly supportive of taking some action now, making it clear that we, as a city council, you know, are supportive of the movement that's necessary and is happening across the country, the world right now.
All right, thank you. Counselor LaJoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a concern with the, one of them. It's, as is the case throughout the country, Lewiston has a long and troubled history of racial and religious, ethnic hatred and division. I would like to have some specific information which stipulates that. I think for many years, and I've been on the council now going on three years, we have been trying to promote the city of Lewiston as a positive, energetic-going community. And I find this statement troubling. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Patengill?
Just to kind of echo the thoughts of Counselor LaJoy. You know, again, I would have appreciated having this earlier than, you know, 4 o'clock this afternoon. There's a lot of statements in here. I don't know that they're incorrect, but I don't have any information for them either. You know, and again, to Counselor LaJoy's point, you know, this, this really says a lot about the community. You know, it's, with everything going on right now, we do have the obligation to do the right thing. Unfortunately, I don't know if we're going to get more than one shot to do it right. There's no reason that nobody's sons and daughters or mothers and fathers don't go home at night after an interaction with our police. So we do need to do the right thing to that. And it's a lot broader conversation than I think we're going to get in just one evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having been a police officer for over 45 years, all of it in northern New England, I take issue with some of the things here. There are several assertions made in the resolve that if true, would be troubling. But I don't think we have evidence to indicate whether or not they are true at this point. Nobody believes any more than I that what happened in Minneapolis was unjust and a terrible thing. But I do not think that we can use a broad brush and paint the entire system. I think we need to look at this resolve. I think we need to look at it carefully. If there is evidence there to back up the assertions made in the resolve, I will stand at the forefront and support it wholeheartedly. But I do think we need to investigate. I, as one, do not believe there is systemic racism in the Police Department in Lewiston, Maine. I worked in the state of Maine, I've worked in the state of New Hampshire. I think that the police officers, at least in those two states, above and beyond most others are competent, professional, humane, and operating to do the right things. The state of Maine has not taught the use of so-called carotid maneuvers since, I believe, the early 90s. I know that there is a policy in place in Lewiston prohibiting it. Lewiston has a Kalia accredited police force, which is one thing many of these communities out there that are experiencing problems do not have. That speaks very highly for the city of Lewiston. We tried, when I was up through, including Deputy Chief in the city of Augusta, to get Kalia accreditation. We could never get support from our council for the funding necessary for the position to oversee that. It was always, quote, "a bad year." I'm not sure to this day whether they are Kalia accredited up there or not. But that speaks volumes about a department. A department that can meet the Kalia accreditation is definitely at the top of the list when it comes to doing the right thing. So I say, we can look at this resolve. I would be more than happy to be involved in any way in assisting and investigating some of these assertions. And if the assertions are actually true, then I say we need to do something. But unless we can show that there is a reason for doing something, I think we want to step very slowly because, as I've often said, you cannot unring a bell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Clement. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't want the public to get the impression that this did not see the light of day until 4:00. It was sent out at 2:00, so I just wanted to say that publicly. And then the other part, as I'm looking at this, as I'm reflecting on it, I think some of Counselor Clement's points are salient. This, the Lewiston City Council and the seven affirmations under it don't really have to do with condemning the police or chastising them in any way. Our Police Department does a lot of things, right? I was so pleased to hear when I asked that we do not authorize the use of chokeholds or strangleholds, especially in light of the murder of George Floyd. And so what I think this is doing is recommitting us to our good policies and then just pressure-checking the rest of them is what I'm seeing here. You know, a lot of this work looks really collaborative as well. So while I think this is a really good place to tell people where Lewiston City Council stands, there's also opportunities for ongoing work. So I think, you know, I don't see, when I read this, I don't read it as a condemnation of Lewiston Police Department. I see it as, you know, reaffirming our commitment to the work that's already been done. And I know later in this, in this evening, we're having a long conversation about the policing strategy here in Lewiston. And so I'm sure more of this will kind of lend itself into that conversation as well. But I just, I think I might be reading it differently than others. And I think, you know, folks want to see us take some action. The fact that we have to act as a deliberative body means that, you know, we are considering it tonight. We will actually consider it for a vote next Tuesday night, it sounds like. And there may be some amendments between, but that's how a deliberative body works. And it takes time and it takes discussion. So I'm very much in support of this. I think the other telling part that, you know, as I work on anti-racist work is, I believe, Black voices when they speak. And I just want to thank Counselor Khalid for putting this together in the manner that she did. And yeah, that's where I'm at with it for now.
Thank you. Counselor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank Counselor Khalid for putting the work that she did into this and encouraging, you know, our council regarding our moral obligation in these times. I think it is so important. I think it wouldn't be right of us not to be doing something like this. When I read it, I never once felt that there was any accusation about our, you know, Police Department, the professionals that are employed there being racist. That's not what I heard at all. Like, the message that came out to me in reading this was really more about accountability. And that's no different than what's expected of any entity, as far as I'm concerned. So I, I just want to applaud your effort and say thank you for bringing this forward.
I will, you know, I'll take just a moment to acknowledge that Counselor Khalid has definitely been working hard at this over the weekend. And I think she is modified from her initial presentation. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want it to be thought that I disapprove of what Counselor Khalid has done. I recognize that she's put a lot of work in this. And as I said before, what you see depends on where you stand. Can we do things better than we're doing? I think that that's always the case, no matter what you look at. And I think what we want to do is to take a look, make sure we're doing the right things, and see if there is something we can do better. I just don't think that we want to jump into this headlong. I believe that there's going to be something coming up later tonight in our discussion here that may bear directly on the outcome of this resolution. I'm not sure. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag. I believe you have something that you wish to announce tonight that may impact this. And we'll see where it goes from there. But can we do something better? I don't think there's ever an instance where you can't. And I just say, in this particular case, let's move slowly and deliberately to make sure of what we're doing before we do something that is going to come back to haunt us. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Clement. Counselor LaJoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, you know, I'd like to comment on Counselor Khalid's efforts to put something forward. And I believe I mentioned that to her. I think it's, it's very loyal of her to take an active part and bring something forward that we can move along with. My only concern, again, is the fact that I hate to see Lewiston specified in a negative manner, whereas we've been trying so hard to move it forward on a positive note. So I do believe this has a lot of meaningful content in it. And I'd like to see it, you know, go forward to be discussed further. But as Counselor Clement stated, let's look at it really well. Let's move it forward so we're comfortable, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I was, you know, when I reviewed it, the final draft later this afternoon, I was really happy that it indicated some of the good work that actually is occurring here in Lewiston every single day with the city spirit. And currently, they're trying to develop a citywide equity statement for both Lewiston Public Schools and the city. And then I was also happy that it included the good word, good work happening from the school committee on our poverty awareness. And I believe honestly that both of those committees are going to produce some good work for our community that will help us in so many ways, especially when it comes to equity, but also when it comes to economic development. Because I think if we address those two major issues, our citizens will feel more welcome, they'll be more productive, we'll all be closer neighbors for the most part. So I just, I did want to acknowledge Counselor Khalid making an effort to include those things. Any other questions or comments for the council before I turn it back over to Counselor Khalid? Seeing none, Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the comments my colleagues have made. First and foremost, I want to thank Chief O'Malley and his officers for being great examples, not only for Maine, but for the rest of the nation. I have been to all the protests that have been happening this past week. And I was amazed at how respectful, engaging, and supportive our Lewistons, Lewiston officers are towards the protests. So again, thank you so much, honestly, from the bottom of my heart. That being said, again, I appreciate the comments my colleagues have made. Again, this is only for, only for discussion purposes. I've, like the mayor has indicated, I've been working on this over the weekend. I've never done a resolution before, so it was my first time. I started thinking about it on Friday. And I apologize that if some of you think that you got this too late. But again, this is only for discussion purposes. That being said, we need to recognize our history, whether in Lewiston, or in Maine, or our, you know, nation. And if any councillor believes that there is any inaccurate information in this resolution, this is why we're doing this. This is why we are talking about this. Please come forward and tell me exactly what information is inaccurate so that we can do further research. Because I believe there is no inaccurate information in this resolution. I am only stating facts and history. That being said, we cannot move, we cannot move slow when it comes to fighting injustice. Again, we cannot move slow when it comes to fighting injustice. And the resolution speaks for itself. It lays out a lot of information, good information, and it also brings out good resolution. Our community, like Counselor Ray said, our community needs to know where the city's leadership stands. We need to reaffirm that we support our diverse community. And as we move from protest to action and true policy change, we must reaffirm the Lewiston City Council's commitment to changing the way policing is performed. It is time to address the inequalities that exist in our own home city. And this resolve is our first step to naming the injustice. That being said, I don't know if I can make any amendments to this. Maybe I can for the 16th. I don't know the process.
So I'm sorry, say that again, Counselor Khalid. I was looking at some comments.
So I want to make an amendment, but I don't know if it's appropriate for right now or for the 16th Tuesday.
And that's an amendment to your resolution specifically? No, I think, so Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, you know, you probably should make that. And when we make it part of the packet, we'll make sure it's included.
Okay.
Yeah, the, this, the resolution is being informally discussed tonight.
Okay.
So it has not been formally introduced. If you want to make some adjustments, that can be done before it appears in the council packet next week.
Okay, thank you. Then I am done talking, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And I know some councillors are, you know, some information that I sent out recently. But in consultation with other councillors, I think that I'd rather work cooperatively with Counselor Khalid and the City Council. So I'll leave it at that. If folks would entertain some type of motion stating that the council would want to work with the mayor with ad hoc committee, I would entertain that now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss, well, no, to put an agenda item on the agenda to ask the mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee that will continue this great work that we're starting to talk about now. Is that clear? Sorry.
I thought it was clear.
Okay.
So I have a motion on the table.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any?
On the water, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did we vote on the previous motion? There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules for the resolve, I believe.
Yeah, I believe we voted for that.
We did, yes, we voted on that. And then Counselor Khalid read the resolve, and that was the discussion. Yes, we did. Thank you, Counselor.
My apologies.
No, thank you. So we have a motion and second on the table to suspend the rules to add an agenda item.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Do you need the motion, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's already made and seconded. Counselor Patengill?
Can we just reread the motion again?
Right, so my understanding, and I can be corrected, Counselor Ray, is there's, she's planning to present two motions. And the first motion is to simply to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda. And then if that passes, Counselor Patengill, then I believe Counselor Ray will be making another motion to create a committee to work with the mayor to discuss this issue.
That's correct.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Ray? Oops, no, also?
Sorry, I'm pressing all the buttons.
That's all right. Seeing none, call the roll, please.
And so just for clarification? And so just for clarification for folks, the motion is to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda this evening. Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Counselor Ray?
So I'd like to add the agenda item to work with the mayor to create an ad hoc committee on equity and diversity that he has outlined a plan for. But I think it would be important for us to show council support for this continued education effort is what I'm taking the perspective of it being. So I guess the short motion is motion to work with the mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee on equity and diversity.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Joy. And you know, I think you folks have saw the outline, and a lot of that outline really kind of coincided with Counselor Khalid's resolution. And I really would like the opportunity to work closely with Counselor Khalid on this. I have some great ideas on committee members. I'm sure she does. And I'd like the opportunity to work with her in developing this committee. And I can assure the whole council that this is going to be a diverse committee and some really strong folks that are going to, you know, I think that will be on it, that I think will be very engaged and get the information to the council for further consideration. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the motion maker and a person who's been in discussion with you about this, I just feel it's important for the council to signal its support for this sort of motion. I think Counselor Khalid's resolve addresses a lot. But as we think about ongoing work and how these efforts are always ongoing and always evolving, and this situation in the U.S. has evolved in a myriad of ways over the past three months, I just wanted to give everyone here the opportunity to talk about that and to talk about the ways they see this committee moving forward. The mayor has limited power, he's unfortunately under the charter. And I think this show of support could really reinforce that we all are moving in a simultaneous direction. I just want to be clear that I don't think they're mutually exclusive. If you vote for one, you can't vote for the other. I don't think that at all. So I want to support both efforts. And it sounds like this has a lot of community involvement, the proposal that the mayor is working for. So I'm all about that.
Okay, Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited to see what the committee puts forward. I understand it's more of an education committee to get information, one for the public at large, but also for city staff and us on the council so we can make informed decisions going forward. So I'm very, very hopeful for the work that will be done. And also, I mean, people want to see this council take action. I'm very proud of Counselor Khalid for being very assertive on, I mean, this issue. And I'm very excited to see the proposals that she's putting forward and the vote, of course, next week. So I feel like the committee is in line with what Counselor Khalid and the rest of us are really asking for. And I thank the mayor for including us as part of that. And I understand that you do have the ability to create ad hoc committees on your own. And so I appreciate us, you know, being included in the loop on that. Very appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jensen. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see this as a two-step process. The committee, the ad hoc committee, I think, should engage, first of all, before, and I asked Counselor Khalid with all due respect to consider perhaps tabling her resolve until such time as the ad hoc committee has had an opportunity to at least meet, perhaps map out our agenda or the committee's agenda, whatever you want to call it, the city's agenda, the council's agenda, and see where we go from there. I'm not sure that the two can be worked simultaneously. They may come at odds at some point. I don't know. But I'm just saying, if we're going to move with deliberation, let's do it cautiously and in pro forma. Thank you.
All right. And at this point, so there's nothing to table because we'll have further discussion on Counselor Khalid's resolve at our next business meeting.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. I'm just bringing that up as a point for reflection tonight. That's all.
All right, thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to be honest with you, I was very surprised when I saw this committee come about. This ad hoc committee came about later in the day because I've been working on my resolution since Friday. That being said, and this is, you know, for the committee and for anyone that is watching this meeting, do you know why there are so many protests going on, not in our city, not in our state, but across the nation? People are in the streets to not only protest police brutality, but to protest the way racism is practiced and embedded into our society. In short, people are in the streets because of the very thing that's right now, you know, happening, where undercutting or overlooking my resolution, actions like this that silence Black voices. This is what makes me so disappointed. Because as Lewiston moves to say publicly that we condemn racism, it must be proven that this intention is legitimate and not only for show. It must be actively anti-racist to be effective. It simply cannot be yet another display of the ongoing silencing and undermining of Black voices, including my voice on this council. That is why I have been working on this resolution since Friday. And to be honest with you, I have been very transparent with the mayor and with the city administrator since last Friday to put this resolution forward and to finalize it and so on. I have some questions when this ad hoc committee came about. Because, I mean, yeah, the mayor has a lot of power, but unfortunately, I was not aware of this taking place. I was not mentioned. It was not mentioned to me, even though I've been very communicative and very transparent about my resolution. And it just really saddens me, and I'm just disappointed that I'm just seeing this ad hoc committee come about out of nowhere. And one thing on my resolution says that create a community review board, a permanent civilian entity that only focuses on the police department misconduct and other things. So reading this ad hoc committee, it makes sense. Maybe it's for the general community, not only for the police station. But it's hard for me to get behind something like this when I've been since Friday working on to bring a resolution.
So, you know, I'll respond to that. So I personally do not agree with a civilian review board for our police. So that right there is a piece of the ad hoc committee is much different than what you proposed. And to be honest with you, your proposal started off much differently than what it ended up being this afternoon. Once I was at a point that your resolution, that I struggled with your resolution enough that it did not incorporate community engagement initially, that's what I started working on, finding ways for our community to engage. Now, originally, I shared with you that I struggled with your resolution because I felt it was important that we hear from our community before this council gets behind a resolution. Once I knew that you were very passionate about this, and I think I shared with you, every council has a right to, and I'm sharing my thoughts, but you have a right to move this forward. Once I knew that that was going to happen, then I decided that it was important for me to engage our community in a meaningful way. And that's the direction I chose to take as mayor. Once I was convinced later this afternoon that there was a belief that I was overstepping a counselor who was trying to move forward a resolution, I took pause, and I shared with a couple of other counselors who shared with me this that although it's well within my authority to do an ad hoc committee, that I'd be willing to pull it back and wait for announcement until tomorrow to engage with the council and get the council's support. So in the end, Counselor Khalid, I think there are several members on this city council that are striving to do good work around our racial division right now. And I also acknowledge you for your hard work. But everybody on this council, I believe, has that same intention, although it may vary somewhat at the level. So that would be my response to you. I think we have an opportunity to do excellent work. I've said it a dozen times, and I'll reaffirm Counselor Petten Gill's recent comment. We have one opportunity here to do it right. And I think we're all trying to do that. And it's a difficult subject, and we may step on each other's toes. But I think as long as we're respectful and forthwith, I think we're all going to make a difference here. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak to a piece of this where I think in establishing an ad hoc committee where the mayor establishes it and then appoints its members, it can get to work sooner. And Counselor Khalid, we've spoken about this, but I am in support of some sort of community review board. But I think the process by which that gets established is pretty difficult because if it's the mayor and the council appointing those members, to me, that doesn't seem truly representative of the community to me. And so even though I'm in support of that measure and of your resolve as a whole, and also in support of the mayor's work, because it might arrive at the same conclusion too for that bit. And also, they can just get started sooner. I think, you know, the pandemic plays a huge role in how convoluted a lot of this is for me personally. So I just wanted to continue to express my support for the duality of these two notions.
Thank you, Counselor Petten Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to comment as far as the ad hoc committee. I really hope it looks at systemic things that are built into everyday operating procedures that are tied to racism and racist practice. Not that they're happening here, but I really hope that we look at redlining and other barriers to business that many folks face with trying to get into, you know, business or the workforce. And just to comment too, as has happened recently, as a couple of months ago, you know, I've given the mayor a hard time with some things, policies that I've disagreed with or some actions he's taken that I've disagreed with. But I've got to say, without a doubt, he's willing to talk and come to a mutual agreement with that, which above all else, I appreciate so much. In the process of this, it is perfectly okay for people to disagree and have differing viewpoints. But it's the ability to come together and talk and figure it out that is so much more important because you'll figure out something in that process. You know, myself, if I had a chance to be able to read this, I was working. I, you know, understand that maybe the email came out at 2 o'clock. I didn't see it till 4. But something, an article that I was reading is about Camden, New Jersey, which is a city that disbanded their police department, created another police department, and some of the processes and policies and procedures that they do, I'm extremely interested in how they approach their day-to-day operations. When a new officer is hired, they make them go knock on the doors and introduce themselves to everybody in the area that they're patrolling. That's fantastic. I don't know what else they do because I haven't had time to read and finish the article. But it's stuff like that that's so enlightening and helpful that we should look at. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, call the roll. Oops, I'm sorry, Counselor Khalid?
Thank you. Quick question. Are we gonna, do we need to vote on this?
We do.
Okay. So, yeah, we've talked a lot about this. There's an ad hoc committee. There's my resolution. They kind of talk about different things, but they have the same goals, right? To bring out, you know, to bring equality and justice to all our residents in Lewiston. I just hope that this ad hoc committee doesn't overshadow my resolution. And of course, that's not your intention, you know, or I hope in this committee's or this ad hoc committee's intention. And that being said, that's the only way that I can be supportive of it.
Thank you. So Counselor Khalid, you're going to be, I mean, if you're willing, I would like you involved from the start. I have chosen a co-chair for this committee, but that's it. I haven't, you know, I have ideas for other committee members. And you clearly know that I have ideas for direction for the committee, but Counselor Petten Gill brought up an excellent idea that I also think could be added to this committee. And any counselor, I would encourage any counselor to reach out to me. But also, just as important, Counselor Khalid, I want the committee to decide as well what they're going to investigate or look into. We're going to, you know, staff appointment to this committee will be from admin, so it's going to be from the top. Although, one, it'll no longer be a mayor's ad hoc committee. It'll be a mayor and city council ad hoc committee. And I just want your community to know that how much hard work you've already started. But I do want my community to know that there are several people that are working hard ever since the protest started. But you have taken a lead in this subject. And I respect that. Well, let me acknowledge, I'm a white person trying to solve an issue that I've never experienced. And I can assure you that I'm going to take advice and guidance from many people through this whole process. And Counselor Khalid, you would be at the top of that list for me. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for clarification, as I understand it, the motion is for the council to work with the mayor to create an ad hoc committee on equality and diversity. Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
And word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay. Hold on one sec, counselors. I just need to check. So there, yes, Deputy City Administrator Dotay, if you could look through and read all appropriate comments.
Yes. Basically, we received six comments through this from one. The first, Steve Banister, this isn't Minnesota. Second, from Steve Banister, our police department is doing a great job. Question, KKK in 1924, I believe that's just more a question, maybe that's that information shared. Steve Banister, again, the answer to poverty is education and hard work. Steve Banister, again, all lives matter. Kevin Farrer, I would like to see a copy of this resolution. Will it be available? I can say, yes, we will make sure that that is available on our website, especially if it's going to be taken up by the council next meeting. It'll be included in the packet. And then the last comment from Steve Banister. Please research stats. I hope this does not lead to a push- "Please research stats, I hope this does not lead to a push to defund our police department."
Okay, we appreciate everybody's comments that have been, now been provided to the city council. Was there any other business the city council wishes to discuss? See and none, our entertaining motion to, do we, do we have to adjourn from this section in the meeting to go into workshop? We don't? Okay, then we'll just slide it right into the workshop. If you could bring anyone present for the Museum LA forward for us, please. Thank you very much, counselors, for that good discussion.
Dennis, I think you're looking for Rachel, but she's actually there with Tom. So Rachel and Tom are in one square, so we're all set. I knew you were looking for Rachel. Thanks.
Okay, Ed, if you could just lead into, lead us into the discussion and then we'll turn it over to whoever.
Okay.
Yes, well, I know that the, that the folks from Museum LA have asked for the opportunity to come before the council to provide an overview of their master plan for their new facility on the waterfront, along with both in terms of the building, layout of the building, and also some of the designs and the way the building will be set up to show the history of the community. So it's our opportunity to go over the plans. I think they have provided a bunch of hard copy or at least electronic pretty pictures, and I suspect Tom and Rachel are prepared to go through that along with Audrey.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll turn it over to Rachel for us.
We're gonna try to share our screen first and get it up.
Very good, thank you.
I think you tell me.
If you need any help, I'd really kind of elevate it to a pretty good tech guy. Ask my counsel.
All right. So are you seeing just a faded site plan of Museum LA?
We are.
Okay, good. Well, good evening, everybody. It's with great excitement that we're here tonight to present a progress report on our community's new future museum. I'd like to introduce, the team presenting tonight will be Audrey Thompson, our Executive Director of Museum LA, Tom Platts of Tom Platts Associates, and myself, Rachel de Grosier, I'm advisor to the project. Prior to starting the design, we looked a lot for a lot of community input. We met with a lot of local students and professionals of all ages, as well as we held several community forums. They all told us they wanted something new in our community, not just another brick building. They wanted something more modern that could represent their starting to put their own character on this, their community, they called it. They stated very clearly that they wanted us to be the center or the living room of the community, a getting-together place where they could come to not only learn, but explore, be challenged and inspired, feel safe, relax, enjoy family and friends, work, share, have fun, and especially celebrate. From this input, we asked our architects and exhibit designers to keep the above feedback and the following important concepts in mind in their designs. From the museum standpoint, we wanted to incorporate the magnificent designs of our mill workers we saved from the dumpsters. We wanted to make sure we had many opportunities for income-producing centers, since we do plan on becoming sustainable. We wanted to showcase major historical artifacts, but we were thinking, what could be other alternatives to putting them all in one building? Thus, you'll see this evening, the beginning of the creation of an industrial sculpture trail to provide public and private partnership opportunities to display various industrial art forms. We wanted to also be a resource for our cities, our local businesses, and our nonprofit colleagues. Development of the site itself on both river fronts needed to have great opportunities for education and inspiration. So from our experience so far and as a result of our research, we also felt our building and site plans needed to be one that would fit the human spirit, inspire all to want to be more each day, be a teaching tool as to modern energy efficiency and eco-friendly opportunities, and most of all, that it be something that our communities know they deserve to have in their own community. So you be the judge tonight if we are on the right track. Remember, this is just the beginning. We have a lot of talking with you to do. Tom?
What we'd like to do tonight is just kind of take you through a short slideshow, giving an idea of the context of museum and the community, a little bit of a look at the building, floor plans, and how we see this progressing. What you're looking at right now is an aerial view master plan of the museum and both sides of the river, how we would be represented in both areas. To the left of the screen, you'll see Bonnie Park. You'll see four kind of designated spots. We hope to have either sculpture or examples of machinery. We have a cornerstone of one of the first shoe factories in the cities that we'd like to show there. And so we'd like to, like people to be able to maybe start in Bonnie Park, or if they start in Bonnie Park, get a taste of the museum and then move across the bridge onto the site of the museum. Of course, obviously, you can also start in Lewiston, in which case you would be coming up Beach Street to the museum where you can see, the old building is kind of the darker portion of the site plan on buildings, and the lighter portion is the addition. We hope to have about 75 cars parking in a lot in front of the museum, as well as you'll see the green area down to the riverfront, which has some outdoor event areas, also for overcrowding, could have some parking in it. We're also trying to be a part of the Lewiston Trail System, which is a sculpture walk and history walk and museum walk. That's the red trail that you see that surrounds the museum, comes from the North Bridge, comes from downtown, and comes from the city of Auburn. Okay, let's take a look at the face of the museum. So what you're looking at now, on your left, is the existing Camden Yarn Mill. In the center is a glass entry point that separates kind of the new and the old. On the right, you see the new museum. It's a steel kind of industrial clad building with a riveted pattern that mimics a pattern from the Bates bedspread and Bates fabrics. This is just an example, not necessarily the exact one we would be using. Oops, I think I went in the wrong direction there. This is in Auburn, over at Bonnie Park, an example of the numbered areas I showed you of potential exhibits that would be encased as you walk through the park. You get a look at shoe machinery or maybe textile machinery. Nothing firm has been decided on that yet. What you're looking at now is the first floor plan. I'm assuming you can see my mouse. Okay, I'll assume you can. Where my mouse is, is the entry to the building coming off of Beach Street. You'll enter a large glass lobby area where you'll have ticketing. You'll, off to your left, you'll have the museum store. This entire area is open, even though it shows in different colors, that's just functional. A little lounge area, there'll be lockers and bathrooms, there'll be a temporary exhibit gallery, which will be constantly changing, maybe community exhibits, maybe new exhibits coming in from out of state. In the back, there'll be a design lab, which gives an opportunity for, whether it's children or members of the community, to work on various exhibits and projects. The back of the building, we have tractor trailer comes in, exhibit staging. But when you get back out to the lobby and you buy your tickets, you would move up the staircase and start your core exhibit, and you'd finish at this lower level again, where you would go to the museum, move out, or move to the back into the cafe and maybe spend some time there before seeing more exhibits. When you come out upstairs of this stairway, you take a right, and here you'd make a decision. You might be in this lounge, which is a community gallery. That would also be a continually changing gallery to exhibit whether it's industry, business, history of Lewiston, Auburn. Whoops, I don't know why that went, yeah, something's happening here, guys, okay. This is the exterior of the building looking from the power, power station down on the river and back towards the cafe. This is the lobby. This is the lobby as you enter the building. It's all glass above you and behind you, and off to your left would be the stairway that takes you upstairs, straight ahead into the cafe. To your right, you would be looking into the core exhibits. This is the children's gallery, which is right off of the core exhibit on the first floor before the cafe. This is as you get out of the elevator or off the stairs upstairs as you begin your view of the core exhibits. On that same floor is a boardroom, which would be available not only to the board of directors, but could be rented out for events, fundraising, so it could become a community space as when it's not being used as a boardroom. This is on the second floor, the beginning of the core gallery exhibit. You can see the circular staircase that brings you back down to the first floor core gallery. Again, back downstairs in the core gallery. And the core gallery is really, Rachel might want to say a few words what the core gallery is.
Audrey's going to cover that.
Okay, okay, believe. This is on the second floor classroom space. We want to be, you know, continuing the educational point for the cities and for children so they can understand how our cities came about, and classrooms to discover where our city's going to be going. On the third floor, we have an event space, which will be exactly that, for community events, fundraising events. It's about 3,000 square feet in one room, and it will be available on a continuing basis for the community. On that same floor outside is another 2,000 square feet of exterior space that overlooks the city and also will be providing space for events. Down in the cafe on the first floor, again, a place to sit, read, get refreshments in between or during your visit to the museum, off-hours, maybe community space for other events.
If you notice that a lot of the patterns that Tom is showing as we move throughout the, is, those are patterns that are directly taken from our mill workers who designed these.
Another look at the cafe from the other end, looking back in. Again, as Rachel mentioned, the chairs are patterns from some of the weaving that was done in the mills. And outside, you'll have an exterior cafe place to sit out in the summer. You'll see off to your right, the shoe lasts, which are hanging as kind of a sun barrier in the windows, but also speaks to the origins of our shoemaking in the community. A view from right after you get off the railroad cressel bridge coming into Lewiston, looking at the museum at night.
And Audrey will take you through the exhibit concepts?
I hope you could get a sense in Tom's slides that our interpretive plan is all about engaging, exciting, and relating to the visitor by providing them with more hands-on opportunities than before. You can expect to see more exhibits with visitors manipulating object replicas, interacting with visitor response stations, listening to and recording oral histories, making things, and engaging in dialogue with others. As we look at these exhibit concepts, and if you've been to Museum LA, you know that our core exhibits are centered around three things. In the center, the river, how the Andrus Coggin provided power and resources that drove the development, history, and culture of Lewiston, Auburn, transforming them into centers of creativity, innovation, and manufacturing. And the impact of work. Of course, for many people, when they think of LA, they think of textile mills, shoe factories, and brick yards. Visitors will see the equipment that was used and learn about the ingenuity and accomplishments of the workers. They will also have an opportunity to practice their own skills, making the sorts of things that were once made here. And finally, the community. This includes everything from arts and music to sports. Visitors will understand the connections between LA and state and national history. They will hear emotional and personal oral histories from people who lived and worked here, and they will interact with exhibit elements and with each other. This space will encourage togetherness, discussion, and pride. And through all three of these, there are important interconnected stories that include education, people, and immigration. And then finally, I just want to say a brief word about fundraising. This entire project is expected to cost about $15 million. We have had preliminary conversations with some potential donors and foundations, but unfortunately, COVID-19 hit just as we were ready to focus on fundraising and to move into the quiet phase of our capital campaign. And of course, we know that it would be insensitive right now to be asking people for money. So instead, what we've decided to do is stay in touch with our constituents and engage with them after this healthcare crisis is behind us. I hope that you, like us, are excited to bring a museum of this caliber to LA. As we speak to people in the community, they can hardly believe that we might have something like this right here. They know it will be an important part of the riverfront revitalization, as well as a way to drive tourism and economic development. So with that, we have every reason to believe that we will be successful in raising the funds necessary to realize this important vision and to be a community anchor for Lewiston, Auburn. And we are grateful for your support as the city of Lewiston, as the city council, and your economic commitment, which has allowed us at this point to move forward with the architectural plans and the exhibit designs that we have shown you tonight.
I hope you can see that we did try to incorporate all the ideas and the comments that the, our community have given us. We did listen very hard to them. And also this evening, we'd like to, we have an announcement to make. This is exciting, too. It's that Museum LA and the Andrus Coggin Historical Society for the past year have started talking to see if, before the whole plan for the museum was completed, we could work together to solve several issues at both organizations and look into costs and efficiency savings. We have come to the conclusion with both boards that our missions and focus don't overlap, but that many functions could be done together while still keeping the autonomy of each organization. That led us to the next phases of discussion. That led us to the next phases of discussions towards a win-win type of partnership. We have also consulted with our architects, and the plan we have shown you this evening could allow us to adjust it so as to accommodate both organizations and maybe one or two more with it. We are now moving to the next steps of our research, which are looking at national trends of nonprofits across the country, the challenges and benefits of partnering, and the key questions for consideration in assessing the right potential partners. If this shows to be a fit, we're going to move towards deeper negotiations. So we'll keep you posted on that. So I think there's a lot of exciting things happening right now, and we're pleased to have had the time this evening to be able to show you what we have done so far. Take any questions or comments, if anybody has any? This is a lot in such a short time.
Yes. So thank you very much. That was really an exciting presentation. And I see Counselor Pettigale has his hand up, and I would assume it's because he's very passionate about this, about the Council Pettigale.
I like passion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm super excited about this, and I, hats off to Mr. Plata. I'm always impressed when his buildings come before the council as far as the design work. Yeah, I just, I gotta say, the attention to detail is amazing, from the bedspread pattern on the exterior wall, all the way down to the four-leaf clover and the fleur-de-lis that was pictured in one of the galleries. I was inside the mill for a makerspace event for kids and stuff, and I saw those on the walls, and it jumped out at me. So that's very, very amazing. You know, and everything from the patterns on the chairs to, and I'm going to get it wrong, but the shoe molds, I guess, that you were talking about, the sun blinds. It just speaks to something that is so uniquely us. And down to what I can only imagine is an homage to the sawtooth roof with the shape and the peak of the glass on there. Simply, simply amazing. Thank you for all the hard work and that particular attention to detail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khalid, and then Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, same comment as my colleague from Word Two. I honestly lost myself in the visual. It's absolutely beautiful. I'm really excited for the cafe and for the community space because we don't have a lot of that here in Lewiston. So thank you for the hard work that you've done.
Counselor Jalinas.
I just want to say thank you for this presentation. I had goosebumps as I was watching the different images come up. Just amazing. I love the idea of that view from the top. What else jumped out at me? The event space, just being able to have that one more additional venue for events. I love that boardroom, even the children's space, obviously that resonates with me. So I just want to say thank you so much for tonight's presentation. It was just fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray, and then Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Tom and Rachel and Audrey. Just such energy comes from viewing this. You know, just maybe two weeks ago, we approved a piece of public art to come to the area down by the mills, and this building itself is a work of art. And so I'm just so pleased that you're sharing it with us and that we have the ability to help you move it forward.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen.
It won't beat a dead horse. I concur with everything my colleague said. Also, just wanted to add in that I'm very excited, honestly excited, to see that you guys were communicating with the Historical Society and that you're kind of the, you know, jointly going to be operating together. Seems like a win-win, and I just want to applaud you all for making that happen.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And I'll just add really quickly, you know, I realize and with good intentions and probably a wise decision that you're holding off on your fundraising effort at this point. But when the time comes, please consider utilizing the mayor's office or city councils to spread the word for you, get people excited. I think most of us would be more than happy to do that for you folks. Counselor Ray?
Just as a professional fundraiser myself, I would say that you guys were probably making the wise choice there, where, you know, I think about it compared to the Bates campaign and how we are just full steam ahead because we already have the process started. But given, given the moment that you're at, if there's anything I can help with, I've realized the mayor probably carries more cachet if you bring him to a meeting than me, but I know the business, so just offering my help.
We're going to bring all of you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to say a big thank you to the community and especially to our kids. We met with a lot of kids in both, you know, middle school and elementary and high school and our young professionals, and they weren't afraid to tell us what they wanted. And we listened, and I think that that is, that's the concepts we gave to our architects, and it's come forth. And the community was really, really, they weren't afraid to tell us what they wanted. So I hope we're giving it, giving them what they asked for.
All right. So once again, yes, and once again, thank you very much for taking time to present to us, Audrey, Tom, and Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, before we move on to the next subject, I received several messages by Steve Bannister, who stated that he made no such comments in our question and answer section. And then when reviewing further, it appears that there were like three different Steve Bannisters signed on, and it did give the appearance that he was making those comments. So first, you know, as mayor, I want to apologize to Mr. Bannister, and I accept full responsibility for that, and I will ask staff tomorrow to have this discussion amongst themselves to see if we can identify ways to protect that from ever happening again. And then I'll also communicate directly with Mr. Bannister tomorrow and speak to him. We're out of our official meeting and into a workshop, and I just want to clarify with him if he, if there's anything else that we can do reasonably to get the message out that those messages were not from him, even if that means talking about it one more time at our next city council meeting. So once again, I'd like to apologize to Steve Bannister, and we will take some steps to try to address that. Okay, with that said, we'll move to workshop item number two, council goal discussion around community safety. We're just waiting for our attendees to be invited.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
Notice there was somebody identifying as Mr. Bannister had his hand raised just a moment ago under attendees. I have no idea whether that's the individual that purports to be Steve Bannister or the real Steve Bannister, so. Still there as such with a hand raised, so.
Dennis, do you know if that's a new raised hand?
It, it, it did come up as you were making comments. Responding, the challenge, as you said, is I've got three Steve Bannisters on the attendee list right now, and I'm unable to tell, as Counselor Clement said, who the real Steve Bannister is.
Second and third Bannister appeared after I made my comments, so I have no idea what's going on, whether we're being hacked or what, but.
Okay, let's just try real quickly to bring him in. I know Steve, so I'll recognize his voice quickly and.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say that until now, I haven't made any comments except to say that I did not make any comments prior to this time. I, if it helps, when I did log in, I registered. So I'm not sure if that has a bearing as to why everybody's comments were under my name, but I appreciate the apology and thank you. And I'm, so that's all I have to say.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much, and I really would like to apologize one more time. So thank you for clarifying that with us, Steve. Okay, moving on to workshop, council goal discussion, community safety. Ed, do you have a presentation to lead into this, or turn it right over to the chief?
My presentation to lead into this is to say, Chief O'Malley, you're on.
So Dennis, if I want to share my screen, do I hit share screen on here or?
So I believe you should be able to, chief, and I'm going to ask Matt behind the scenes to make sure you've got that, that permission, but you should be able to try it.
Sure, chief, you should be able to just hit the green share screen up arrow and then pick what, whatever, whatever thing you want to.
Then I have to hit screen, Matt?
You just, yep, there you go.
There we go. All right, so I was asked just to kind of give the city council those kind of an overview on our positions and kind of types of calls. My conversation with the mayor and Ed, I went back about 10 years, so I did provide a packet, and this is more for the folks at home that may not have that or seeing that. So I looked at the number of officers we've had. I've been here, this will be year 31, and the numbers have been fairly consistent throughout the amount of time that I've been here. And I went back to 1995, we had 79 officers. Over the years, it's fluctuated one or two positions, sometimes based on just the way the economy was back in 2014. We were back down to 79. We were up to 82, and the last city council actually funded a couple extra positions. We created a new school resource officer position, so we were up to 84. As many departments throughout the country are having, we're having trouble recruiting, we're having trouble retaining officers. I've seen over the years just the amount of calls have increased that the officers respond to. Back in 2010, we had 38,592 calls, and that's for anything where an officer pulls over a car, somebody calls 911, somebody calls a non-emergency number. We keep track of all those calls where an officer actually has to respond or get involved. And if you look at the calls for service totals, I mean, they've fluctuated a couple thousand, but last year, we were up over 47,000 calls for service with the same amount of officers. We often have times our officers are injured or on light duty, which takes away from our, our manpower. We have several offices that are in the reserves, and at times, they have to be activated. I had two officers that were gone for a year on military duty last year. One of them then resigned when he came back, and the other officer came back for about two, three months, and he's been activated again. And then just the other day, I had another officer that was activated. That's only for a couple of weeks. So it's always a changing, fluctuating, the actual offices that we have available to respond to the calls. And also, a lot of different calls that we go to, more quality of life issues as opposed to, you know, the major crimes. And we average, you know, one to two murders a year. Last year, we didn't have any. So I looked at the types of calls that we get, disturbances, drinking in public, fireworks. When those became legal, legalized, that really increased amount of calls we received, prostitution complaints that are called into the police department. Those have fluctuated over the years, but there's still been a constant. If you look at disturbances over the last five years, they've gone up over 2%. Drinking in public complaints have gone down, but prostitution has increased dramatically. Fireworks, I think initially, when the fireworks were new, that was kind of a big draw. We've seen a drop in complaints, but I would really think that people just kind of got frustrated and stopped calling those in. We also get a lot of calls for people smoking marijuana now that that is legal, but I did not include that in this list, but that's just another issue that the officers try to respond to. And what we also respond to is more serious crimes. And what those are called are pot one crimes, and that's, that's not just in Lewiston, that's nationwide. That's what everybody keeps track of to make their crime rate. And actually, you look at in 2010, we had 1,146 pot one crimes, and those are aggravated assaults, robbery, rape, burglaries, larceny, which would be theft, motor vehicle thefts and arson. So in reality, you look and say, oh, great, you know, the pot one crimes have gone down. I mean, 2018 was 673. Last year, we had a jump up again at 805. But the reality is, even though our crime rate is down from nine to 10 years ago, if you actually look at this, it's gone down quite a bit. People in the city don't feel safe, and there's a reason for that because we seem to have a large number of shootings now. And I compiled the number of shootings. Back in 2010, we had one shooting reported, which was, that used to be a very infrequent thing that would occur. I was a detective for a very long time here at the police department, and that was something that didn't happen that often. Unfortunately, shootings have occurred. We just had one about two weeks ago. So so far this year, we've had six, and it's only half a year. I mean, last year, we had 14, so we're probably on a pace to equal that or maybe go beyond that. My hope is we don't. I'm looking at the percentage change from 2010 to 2014 to 2015 to 2019. You're looking at an almost 89% increase in the amount of shootings that we've had. We have a lot of folks that carry firearms now who used to not carry them. Unfortunately, we have people who come out of state and they get involved in some criminal activity, and they often carry firearms with them here in the City of Lewiston. And that's just another aspect that my officers, my detectives have to try to address. The Counselor Clement also asked for a bit of a breakdown of, you know, the assignment of my officers. So we have a patrol division, and out of that, we have people that are assigned to some special, special assignments. We have two officers that are assigned to Main Drug Enforcement Agency, but they don't just work solely in Lewiston. They also have to work Franklin and Oxford County. So I wish that all of MDA would just focus on Lewiston, but they actually have to have quite an area that they have to investigate. So we have an officer that is assigned to a high intensity drug trafficking. They work with DEA, they're a sworn federal officer. We also have an officer that's assigned to the Central Main Violent Crime Task Force, which is with ATF. And that's a benefit to us because we get the federal resources to help us when we are tracking down a firearm or where we have shell casings. We get to get, they'll come and help my officers do their investigations. If we have a suspect and someone has fled the state, fled our jurisdiction, it's very helpful to have the federal partners. There was a case a number of years ago where a woman was run over in front of Longley School. It was a horrible case, but the suspect fled Lewiston, got to New York, and was about to get on a plane in JFK. And with our cooperation with our federal partners, we were able to catch him before he left the country. He was planning on leaving the country. I have a one patrol officer assigned to what we call a selective enforcement team, and that selective enforcement team doesn't do the long, drawn-out investigations like perhaps the Main Drug Enforcement Agency does. They'll do more of the shorter investigations. They'll work on prostitution. If we're having an area where we're having a lot of burglaries or something like that, they will come in and work on that in addition to the detectives. They're in plain clothes, so if you see them, you wouldn't think that they were police officers. They do it to, you know, kind of blend in with the community. So they'll do prostitution arrests, and they'll do drug arrests as well. And they're over at the 85 Park Street. We also have two patrol officers and a sergeant assigned to Community Resource Team. Community Resource Team does a lot. I think some of you probably know Joe Philippon is probably my better-known Community Resource Officer. Joe takes part in a lot of meetings, community meetings with the different folks here in downtown and in Lewiston. We do coffee with a cop in the area, nursing homes. Joe Philippon started the movie nights that we had. We have, one of my Community Resource Officers works with Bates College, where they meet with the incoming students, and they also meet with the students saying that we'd be moving off campus. And we used to have three officers in that, but now we're down to two officers and one sergeant. So we're kind of spreading them in a hundred different directions. They also work on our disole properties, policies. They do the follow-ups when we get the complaints at the different apartments. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have a full complement in my patrol division. We're down to 45. I've got some officers that I, excuse me, that I sent to the academy, but when COVID hit, that kind of put a halt on their training, so we've been doing the training in-house. Luckily, we're a big enough department. I have firearms instructors, I have EVOC instructors. Luckily, we're a big enough department. I have firearms instructors. I have EVOC instructors. So we're moving them along. I was planning on sending additional four offices to the academy, May 15th, but that didn't start at that point. Believe to maybe start in August. Next week, the police academy is having a meeting. And we might get a little more direction on who and when it's going to actually begin. I'll go on a little bit further with, we have different shift schedule. The patrol officers work four days on, two days off. There's three different shifts. There's 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM and 11:00 PM to 7:30 AM. I was asked by one of the counselors, the same offices on the same beats all the time. And majority of times they are unless they're on a overtime shift, they will fill in a beat for, for another officer. However, every four months, the officers have a shift rotation and based on seniority, they could say, well, I don't want to work if they have enough seniority. I don't want to work the night shift anymore. If I have a nice seniority, I'm going to go to days. Or if I don't want to work the third shift, they can switch. I mean, oftentimes when they switch shifts, they'll also end up switching beats. So that's kind of every four months, but we do have somewhat continuity with it until we have retirements and we have, you know, people get moved. We normally have seven patrol offices and two supervisors working each shift. Oftentimes we hire additional offices to work. We're trying to focus on Lisbon street in the down Lisbon area, a street with the businesses down there. Also with Kennedy Park, we've been trying to do some walking beats over in Bartlett Walnut Street where we had the shooting. We've had some other issues up in that location. So it's an ongoing process, you know, it's, it seems sometimes I, I hire people, but then I have retirements. I've had two offices retire this month and I've just been notified another one of my supervisors is going to probably be coming in next week to tell me he's retiring. So we're having some turnover here. So unfortunately it takes about a year to get and then, you know, interviewed and trained and get someone on the street to fill the beats or fill the patrol offices beats. I'm going to show you now, this is just the beat designation throughout the city. I'm like beat four, that would be outer Lisbon street out to Pinewood's. You see, that's rather large geographic area and that's the number of calls that we got in calls for service back in 2019. You see B three, another, the green is another large geographical area. Over 6,000 calls. But then you look at the, the, the lower beats, beat six, beat seven, beat five, beat one, those are all in our tree street neighborhoods and beat one encompasses Bates College area. So they have a large number of calls there. So it takes up a lot of time with my officers. And what I see as well is this, it's different types of calls that the officers go to now. When I came on the police department, we didn't carry Narcan. That's something I started as I was the chief of police. Unfortunately, we receive a lot of those calls. And those aren't just something that's done in two or three minutes. That's a rather drawn out investigation, you know, make sure the person is safe, get them to the hospital. We do have a follow up that's done. Unfortunately, the COVID-19 has affected that because we were working with Tri County where they had someone coming in and riding with my officers called Project Support You, and they would do follow ups with the folks who have overdosed. That's kind of taken a backseat. We're not doing that right now. My hope is maybe in July, we can start that up again and Tri County was looking to get some more funding to work on that. So after the officers go to all these calls, majority of them I handled through patrol, but there's a large number of the part one crimes that get referred to our detective division. And we have 11 detectives, two sergeants and one lieutenant. We also have under the detective division are our school resource officers and a dare officer. We are going to have three school resource officers and for the first time starting this school year based on Connor's Elementary and the size of that school. We were able to get another position for that. I do have two of my detectives also work with a selective enforcement team. And I have one of my detectives that works with the FBI with the joint terrorism task force. And that kind of is been divided up between when you have victims who are adults and victims who are juveniles. They call the adult side and we call it the youth aid side. Then we have a records division and that has, I think some of you probably recognize his name. If you don't know him, Lieutenant David St Pierre, he's also my public information officer. He puts out a majority of the, the press releases. He oversees that division and that has majority of my civilian employees, my animal control officer, our fleet manager, evidence property manager and some clerks that deal with the records and the action reports and things of that nature. And then there's administration division that's made up of myself, my deputy chief. I have a administrative sergeant, Derek St Lawrence, Sergeant St Lawrence. He's actually getting promoted July 1st, and then he's going to be replaced by Sergeant Conley. I don't know if you folks know Sergeant Conley, but she's currently in charge of my community resource team. So overall I have 82 sworn personnel and I have 13 civilian positions for a total of 95. I'm striving to address the issues that come up here at the police department. But sometimes we're just struggling just to have people in the cruises to answer the 911 calls. We've been trying to address some of the issues throughout the city in different areas by hiring overtime and moving people around on different beats. Now this meeting for you folks is about your goals and objectives. And so what I do at the beginning of the year, I met with my command staff and I'm put up on the screen now our goals and objectives. So I get input from all my supervisors of, you know, of my patrol supervisors, my detective division and my community resource team. And then we come up with ideas of what we'd like to see happen. We've seen that there's been a, a rather sharp decrease in traffic enforcement. So we wanted to work on that. We were starting actually to work on that. We were hiring an extra officer to work, you know, date times a day that we were having issues with the traffic and saying, okay, you don't have to answer any calls. You're going to focus on traffic enforcement. You know, if we got a complaint of speeding, say on College Street or Green Road, that's where we were having them go. But unfortunately with the COVID, things kind of got sidetracked on that. We're working on everyone moving into 85 Park Street and they're very appreciative of that. I'd like to give the city council, anyone interested, a tour of that. Once we've got a little more space between the COVID. But that kind of took a backseat because our federal partners have not moved in yet based on them working from home and not wanting to move into a new spot, new building as of yet. So we don't have everybody in place yet. That was one of our, our goals to have that. So we could have all these people in one place working together. It's easy to share information to know what one another is doing to help with the enforcement here in Lewiston. Initially, we want to try to increase our detective division. We now have a detective who almost solely works on cell phones and computers and laptops. Because pretty much every crime that makes its way into the detective vision involves this. So I was looking to try to increase that, but understandably so that with the COVID and the financial crisis that the city is possibly facing, that we weren't able to do that. I think I did talk a little bit about Project Support You. My hope is that Tri County does get this. I mean, years ago, we used to have somebody who was assigned to us that would work our night shift, Laurie Samatell, she's a doctor now, but she would patrol with our offices and she would respond to any calls where there was someone with a mental health issue, suicidal and things of that nature, which was very helpful to us. And I'm hoping with this project support you and our work with Tri County that can begin again. In terms of outreach, we do we've called the citizens, police academy. But we're calling it a community police academy now, just to get more people involved and get to understand what the police department does. We want to, we wanted to continue with the movie projects, but obviously with the, the guidelines by the governor, I mean, we would get, you know, 200, 350 people at these events. We can't do that this summer. We also have on here about our disole property SOPs once again. With a bit of a manpower issue in our community resource team. We're, we're kind of limiting going into the buildings. We're calling folks out. We're trying to do things on the phone. So that's kind of been a bit of a sidestep on that because of just the calls that we have to go to. And that what we can't respond to, my hope is again, once we have another month or so under our belt and our numbers go down in the city, my officers will start being to do that more often. We also were trying to work on the homeless outreach in the community. We would also take somebody from Tri County and bring them out to the different locations. If we got complaints, there were some encampments out by Sunnyside Park. That's, you know, the back Bay area. And we wouldn't just go running in there and kicking them out. We would give them an opportunity, try to get them some, some services. They'd feel more comfortable speaking to the gentleman who works for Tri County and the police officers would just kind of be off to the side and just show him the different locations. But we are working with various landowners when it comes to having the homeless on their, on their property. I think that kind of goes over what I, my staff came up with or their goals and objectives. I'm sure you folks have something different. I welcome the input in terms of what you'd like to see going forward. If you have any questions, I know you've had a lot of different conversations. I think this was set up a couple of weeks ago before the George Floyd and all this began. So that's kind of what I was preparing and focusing on. But if you have any other questions on what I've said, I have no problem. If there's other questions you want to ask me, go right ahead.
All right. Thank you very much, chief. And I guess I want to just acknowledge with you acknowledge in that times have changed in the past two to three weeks and you willing to accept questions more broadly outside of our goals meeting. I think that's important to hear from you. So thank you. With that said, I'll turn it over to the council for questions. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Problem on muting here. I want to commend the chief on the information that he put forth. I probably recognize, as do you, the degree of difficulty that he operates under, given the constraints that he's just explained to us. Police agencies historically have been the repository for whatever society does not want to deal with, be it mental health issues. Everything from public drinking, you know, to all sorts of different things that don't fit into a nice neat little niche of their own. Well, let's give that to the police. Mental health, we, we can't afford mental health services. Put them in the jail. So the sheriff deals with them. I recognize these problems. I think that Chief O'Malley should be commended for the job he's done today. I think we as a body certainly want to get together with him and work to provide the best possible police services and feeling of safety for the citizens in Lewiston. I think part of this is going to be to question him as to what other people we might need to bring on board. What other partners do we want to involve other than our police, such as our prosecutors, our judicial branch? I think this needs to be a very broad and encompassing conversation. I think earlier tonight, my colleague from Ward two mentioned the fact that we have but one opportunity. It's the old, you have one chance to make a first impression. And we as a council in dealing with this issue, let's get together, let's do it right. Let's include the proper people. Get some good ideas on the table and move forth. And as Councilor LaJoy said earlier this evening, let's, let's make it a positive thing about Lewiston. I think that's a very important part of this whole deal. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, a huge thank you to Chief O'Malley. I bombarded him with questions and clarifications over the weekend. And so I really appreciate all of that. I think, so I approached first becoming a city councillor and also still two and a half years in, I don't know that much about policing. And so he, Chief O'Malley and his staff have been very gracious. I especially want to thank Corporal Soma, Officer Chamberlain and Officer Fecto. I've done ride alongs with the three of those folks and can absolutely verify these, these officers are stretched so thin and are being asked to respond to things that I wouldn't assume are policing. And so so this is a great overview of all of that. In kind of the context of today, it was helpful to look at this kind of 10,000 feet in the air and see that you know, we compare your budget, Chief O'Malley, to other, to the Lewiston city budget and it's 4%. I mean, that seems pretty unheard of in what we're seeing with other municipalities. More in other states than in Maine, but still a good point of reference for us. We're seeing, you know, the increased mental health and drug use calls. And so I think kind of backing up what Counselor Clement was just saying, and not just you thinking about who already works together on these issues, but who else we need to bring in. And so I think the initiative with Tri County mental health is incredibly important and how can we support that as a city? I know we've had, you know, discussions with prosecutors in the area and the DA's office and they're not under this, this city council's jurisdiction in the same way that the Lewiston Police Department is. And so I don't know that we got very far with requests and I think they're doing, they're servicing a very different area than just Lewiston. And so, so that complicates things. And so thinking about who, who we can bring in under our umbrella. Sorry, I'm taking a lot of time. One thing that I was curious about when I was asking about the, the cops who have certain beats is what the relationship with the city council should look like. And I mean, I couldn't tell you who those folks are for where I live or, or the residents they might interact with. And so I think that might be a point where we could build more connection between the council and those officers. I also did not realize that Sergeant or Lieutenant, when does it change?
July 1st, he'll be lieutenant.
Okay, so Sergeant St Laurent, congratulations to him. I didn't realize he was like the city council liaison according to the org chart. So all of this information, I'm sure we got it during our orientation, but what a great refresher this is. Again, two and a half years in and not trying to learn on the job sort of thing. So I just want to be thankful for that. The only other thing was the clearance rates and the comparisons of those over time and to the national averages. I, I did not know this, and so I just want to voice it. So sexual assaults are reported and there's no clearance for those crimes in the 19, 2019 data. That was really fascinating to me and the chief pointed out that, you know, there are very specific situations where that happens. I'll let you speak to that because I don't want to misquote you, but the clearance rates were very interesting to me, but the data doesn't tell the full story, I feel like.
Right. So they, they, I mean, clearance rates normally are just based on if we, with the identify the person and arrest them. But oftentimes, so no matter what happens, if someone reports a sexual assault and my officers or my detectives begin investigating it. And then if the victim or the survivor decides, say, no, I don't want to cooperate, which is their right to, we have to stop the investigation. If we haven't identified who it is, it doesn't get cleared. So that doesn't count as a clearance. And unfortunately, I think we had one individual who reported several in about two or three month span and that caused us some issues, but she didn't want to cooperate and on the guidelines that we have to follow, which is called the uniform crime reporting system, it's, it's not considered a cleared case. We can't just say, oh no, you know, we don't believe her. That didn't happen because she says she doesn't want to do this anymore. It doesn't get cleared. So there are times where you can have what's called an, I don't want to get too deep, but an exceptional clearance. If you identify the person and the victim refuses to cooperate or the DA's office doesn't charge, but there's a lot of difference. Usually you'd have to identify who the person is, they have to be arrested by your agency or arrested by a federal agency for the same crime, but they're being charged federally.
It was, it was just, I, I can't imagine my questions will stop. So my apologies for that, chief, but I think this data helps us kind of hone in on what could be the areas that we focus on and the areas where we give your department more support through partnerships and through getting the right people to help out. That's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khalid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm, I'm not familiar with the terminology, but chief, is beat seven part of downtown area or what?
Beat seven would be Lisbon street, the left side of Lisbon street, all the way down to the Andrew Scott Graham River and then out Lincoln Street to South Avenue.
Um, so I see one of the goals for 2020 is to expand homeless response and outreach to the community. And as we've all read and yet, and that you've laid out, officers are responding to overdoses, many that may result in death. There's also There's also increased calls for officers responding to individuals with mental health issues, officers dealing with issues that relate to. Quote quality of life. Most of these problems arising from substance use disorders, mental health diagnosis and poverty require medical professionals and social workers. Not not criminal enforcement or armed officers. Law and law enforcements, as you know. As you know, are not trained and equipped to be experts in responding to mental health crisis. That is why many officers, you know, may feel drained, may resign, etc. So I have, you know, some ideas. This is just, you know, a workshop, but I hope we can support you and. What was it? What mental health agency?
Tri County Mental Health.
Yeah, Tri County Mental Health. I hope that we can in the future like create some kind of a crisis response team, maybe. One, it can be different from, it can be different, it can be maybe like another non-response 911. 911 call that is different and only goes directly to this crisis response team. So that was an idea I'm thinking about.
If I can interrupt for one moment. We did have those things, the state did have it and things like that have been cut over the years. Where they would respond, I mean, we would go and then make sure that they were all set and then we would leave and then the crisis response team would stay. Councilor Khalid, I majority of my offices have received what's called CIT Crisis Intervention Training. I see Councilor Jalinas nodding along with me and that's. Dealing with folks that respond, dealing with de-escalating. So we're not, you know, just going in and, you know, people are being harmed because they're having some sort of. Mental breakdown. So we have a lot of that that goes on. It's actually the training gets put on over at Central Maine Community College. What we actually do is I have one on our dispatch center when the offices that are working, if they have this training, they have the CIT. Initials are next to their name. So a dispatcher will know, okay, this is a mental health call. This person is suicidal. Even if it's on someone's beat, they would go, but if that person's not CIT trained, we'll say, okay, well, the next beat over, he's CIT trained. I want to make sure that CIT trained officer, CIT trained officer. Goes to this call without other roles. But I totally agree that. Mental health issues and substance abuse are driving a majority of the calls. So I would love to have, you know, funding for Tri County to have people that I've been in discussions with the Department of Public Safety, Mike Shawstock. About having possibly two people 40 hours a week each once, that'd be 80 hours of coverage of them working with my offices and going to these calls. What they also do is we have a drug overdose. We have Narcan, we take them to hospital. We're not arresting these people. We're not charging them with anything. We're getting to the hospital. We want to have somebody do immediate follow up with that person because my thoughts are. This person is just overdosed. Now is the time to say, okay, you almost died. This police officer just saved you. Get some help. Not that the police are there involved in that conversation. I want them to have that with someone else with substance abuse and mental health training. So I'm all for that.
Thank you. I have a question. Does does our 911. Call center, do they have staff that are mental health workers so that when a call like that comes in that someone who is an expert in that area can answer?
I can't say that they're experts. They do have a medical protocol that they have to follow. But also you look at the number of calls that we're going to, they're the ones that are sending them to us. So no, they have to dispatch those up. So they don't have someone with mental health training. Solely answering those type of calls, no.
I think I think we need. Experts, mental health experts, some, you know, trained social workers, some kind of, you know, mental health clinicians. To go with officers when they get calls like this. Maybe they can be a crisis team that, you know, continues to patrol our community. Maybe. They can go the officers, maybe they can, you know, have different kinds of shifts, but it's really important for, you know, for for the city. For the department to help our officers because that's, you know, mentally draining to them because that's not something that, you know, they extended that they've, you know, an expert in.
Exactly. We are asking in my patrol offices to be mental health workers, to be substance abuse counselors, to be parents. I mean, this, you cannot expect the offices to do all that and. I understand a catchall because of funding and issues, but I think that if we can get that funding, we would welcome to have those folks here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief O'Malley, for this report. I spent a lot of time going over this and it was quite educational and I learned a lot. I'll echo my colleague, Councilor Khalid, when I say, you know, hats off to the Lewiston Police Department and how. Our recent events have been handled in regards to the protests, just really impressed with all that. You know, I I think that Project Support You is a prime example. You know, you talked about that early in your presentation, a prime example where. We as a council can come around and try to support those types of positions. I mean. As a before becoming a councillor, I was on the Board of Directors, as you know, for Tri County for years and intimately familiar with that project and the success of that project in this community. And I think that that's been a great sort of, not just for dealing with individuals who are struggling with substance use disorder, but. That model, if you will, whether you're talking about one of the goals I read, you know, you talked about the homeless population and really tried to do some outreach there. I mean. That particular model, not just for that area, but so many other areas, like you said, where your offices are just spread so thin. I know for me, that's a priority. It's something that I'd love to be able to do as a council to come around and support that way. You know, I think Counselor Clement used the word. Repository, like we don't want to be putting all this stuff, like it just becomes everything that is now on the LPD, but rather. You know, could we look at a different way to do it? It's not always about more police officers. It's always, it's about really, how can we do things differently perhaps and take some of that stuff that's spreading everyone so thin? So. That jumped out at me. I did have a couple of questions about your report if I could ask two, three quick, three quick questions. One was. I know that there's, did you say there's two or three school officers or dare officers?
Right now, there are two school resource officers and one dare officer, but starting this August or September, whenever they start, we're going to have a full time. School resource officer at Connors, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and then a dare officer will go around and teach the dare classes to all the elementary schools.
Okay, I just know that with, you know, school finishing on March 13th and there's now, you know, rumor that we, you know, potentially may not go back. Physical facing, would that kind of education from the, would that be happening virtually or would they just be reassigned?
Well, right now they're reassigned, so they're filling all these empty spots that I have of people I have, I have four out right now that are on light duty or injured and two on. So they're filling. So what's going to happen is they go back to school. I have four that right now are in a field training officer program. So they'll just kind of take those visits. So I'll still be where I am right now with Manny.
Okay. And then just a question about efficiency. One of the things that you talked about here is the use of recording devices. Has also led officers being required to download and then upload and then they've got to transcribe it and all that stuff. And I just thought like, is that, is that like the most efficient way like? That was old school when I read it. I just thought like, really?
That's required from the DA's office, from the courts. My offices, we do have the the cameras in the cars and they also have microphones that they wear on their shoulders. So if they go in and they're speaking to. Folks that are involved in the domestic, they will record that conversation. Oftentimes a victim of a domestic violence. When they speak to the officer, they'll make some statements, but then later. They'll change their mind for various reasons, financial, whatever, in terms of dependence on the their spouse. So the DA's office wants to have all those interviews recorded. What we do is those, we have to, they go from my, the cruisers, they upload them to a server here, we have to download them to a laptop and upload them to the cloud for the DA's office, so then distributes it. To the defense attorney. So there's no more paperwork, but there's a lot more involved. It's a lot longer than it used to be.
Okay. All right. And then the last thing, what is the acronym SOP?
Standard Operating Procedure.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay. I'm in healthcare. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions for the chief, but I do thank him for the information. That was really quite a bit and pretty helpful. I just wanted to share some thoughts. My focus is pretty much on the downtown area. Not to take away from the rest of the city, of course, but I'm a resident of downtown. I've lived here for about two and a half years. The main message of what I want to say is that. Downtown, living, walking, doing business, you're not going to feel unsafe. You're not going to be unsafe. Pretty much all the, any act of violence is not random. It's targeted. So you might be uncomfortable, but you won't be unsafe. So that's the main point I want to get across. But so I just, I wanted to say that. As a caveat, because I do have some criticisms and I don't want it to just sound like, you know, I hate the downtown, I hate the city. I live here for a reason. I love this city. I say this for improvement. I guess just to start out, I mean, this is my neighborhood. I moved because I wanted to, never had a chance to live downtown in my life. I grew up by McMahon School. And I wanted to move down here and I also saw the need for change and realized that if I really wanted to see some change here, I got to get my butt down here. So I did. Well, I can tell you in the two and a half years I've lived here, I've called police multiple times, probably more than five or six times. Different reasons, I've given witness reports, I was subpoenaed as a witness in a case to testify. So I like to think that I'm doing my part, aside from picking up litter occasionally when I have some sleepless nights. So I like to think of, you know, I love this downtown, it's my neighborhood, I want to do my part, I want to make it better. So some of the things that really stand out to me. Bartlett Street, Bartlett Street, we've done a lot of work on it. Just last week or earlier this week, there was a painting done in the parking spaces again. But if you drive down Bartlett Street, it's not pleasant to look at. Public drinking, people standing on corners, but I can assume selling drugs. And it's just not, not a pleasant sight, even with the parking spaces that we have them painted out, people are parking outside of the space or sometimes I can't even get by and have to wait for the car to go this way, then I can go by. An occasion, a couple of months, few months back, where these people got into a brawl at the intersection of Bartlett and Walnut. And myself in a line of cars could not move. Someone had pulled out, you know, a gun and accidentally let off some, some shots, could have hit someone, could have hit me. I was a sitting duck at that point, unless I just parked my car, left it in the street and got out and walked home. Of course, people wasn't going to do that. That stuff does happen. Walnut Street too, the area from Park Street up until Bartlett or so, particularly in front of Poreiers. I spoke with the owner of the Agora Grand. Billy and I know that she would like to have a place for her. Customers, clients to be able to go to, just go to a store. I mean, if you're at the Agora, Poreiers is right there. They should be able to go there, no problem. If you walk there, it's absolutely uncomfortable. If I had my nieces, I wouldn't walk them down that that part of the street. I absolutely would not. Also Pine Street, Pine Street to me is a big one. I mean Walnut Street, not everybody's going down if, you know, it's a good route downtown. But if you're coming from out of the downtown or leaving, you might not take Walnut Street, Pine Street and Bartlett Street especially. Pine Street, pretty much around the area where I live. Between Horton and Howe, I think is the big issue. That's where you see a lot of the prostitution, a lot of the drug dealing, just people congregating, loitering. Crossing streets, just popping out of nowhere diagonally, people seeming like they're on, well, not sober. And so if you're anyone that's coming to the downtown area, you come to. Let me go anywhere downtown, you come up Pine Street, you're headed up Sabato Street to go out of town, you have to drive by this stuff. We talk about city image. When people drive by this stuff, it just reinforces the negative image they have Lewiston. So I know I'm talking, this is about community safety and I don't want to jump into other topics. For me, it's it's all part of the same thing. So it's kind of hard to just focus on this part right now. Although I am trying. I mean, also Kennedy Park, I mean, I've tried to talk to people there and tell them that when they consume marijuana in front of children, it normalizes that behavior. Most of the people didn't know what the word normalize meant, didn't have much effect. It's extremely frustrating. So I've given up on even speaking out. So. Those are some of the problems that I see. And again, I don't say that those happen everywhere across the country. It's not strict Lewiston and it's absolutely, you know, it's all over Maine. Lewiston honestly has a better crime rate than a lot of other places in Maine. So. I say this, but we can hopefully improve on them. I don't want to put out a call for more officers. Our officers are overworked as is. They deal with too much. I can think when I called police on a woman just sitting in the middle of the road, she's well known to police, you know, I pulled my car over, called the police. Eventually got her to the side of the road so other cars could pass. They had, you know, called police who eventually called ambulance and police officers just in a very, very frustrated tone, just said. It's almost every day over there. So there, you know, there are issues that police are dealing with. And I think as some of my colleagues, colleagues have mentioned before, you know, should a police officer be called for that for a woman dealing with a mental health issue? You know, we should have other services. Our police are overworked and they have bigger things to worry about. For me, and this is the big point I want to get across. I think if we're going to see the most change in our city, we really need to go after bad landlords. There are really good landlords out there, like my landlord, background check, tour, meet them, whole gamut, very, very, you know, careful about who's letting into the building. I have great neighbors too. Love my landlord. There are other landlords who will let people in without doing a background check just to get the money. And I get this, you know, you've got to pay the bills, I totally get that. But we take the sacrifice as a city when that happens. When people from out of state come into town and set up an apartment to do drug dealing. And violence comes to the community as a result. It's coming from outside and that is the fault of landlords. Absolutely is. So we need a system of carrots and sticks for landlords. And I say all this with, I bring a lot of problems to the table without any solutions and it's probably not what a good city councillor should do. But I really, you know. I really want to work on a plan for carrots and sticks for landlords. And on the Recycling and Waste Reduction Committee, we're kind of having this conversation as well. Because honestly, it does come down to landlords quite a bit. It's really the only option you have. An obvious carrot for landlords, for anyone not familiar, you know, some incentive for landlords to do the right thing. Property values in Lewiston are throwing up right now. And if we continue the trend of economic development in the city like this council's pushing, then that's enough of an incentive for landlords. The buildings they have are going to be worth a lot more. And if you're a landlord, you know, owning some buildings, you'll sell them and retire, you're going to be in a pretty good position. So I think that's almost carrot enough. Sticks, I don't know it's entirely legally possible. I don't know if we can require landlords to that, give a background check to everyone prior to granting a lease. I don't know what the rules are in kicking people out. I don't know what's even best to get landlords to buy in. Not a landlord and I'd want to speak to more of them. But I am 100% certain that landlords, you know, we're going to have to make some changes here, maybe add some teeth to. The nuisance ordinance, nuisance landlord ordinance, I think I might be mistaken here, but. I have more of that. So I'll wrap it up because I think I might be getting close to rambling here. But again, folks, some strategy for landlords, I've talked a little bit with a few of you guys, I know with. Mr. Dote about having a plan for certain streets in the town that when people come into Lewiston, the high visible. Areas will make those look especially good. It's going to be good for reputation. And so. I'd like to see a lot of that stuff applied to places like Bartlett Street, Pine Street. So if you're coming into the downtown, you're going to have a good impression every time. Yeah, I'll leave it there, but I'm open to talk to anyone in the public that wants to reach out to me and talk. As well as any other councillors or city staff. I'm very proud of the work that our city staff and police officers do. They absolutely have worked. And I appreciate them working with me, you know, anytime I've called to help resolve some issues, whether it's a brawl outside of my apartment or a kid getting hit. So again, Lewiston, it's a safe city. We have work to do. We can always do better. You'll be uncomfortable, but you won't be unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Councilor Clement.
Button is sticking tonight for some reason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly to Mr. Jensen's comments. The landlord issue, this is where we might wish to involve another partner, namely the sheriff. The sheriff handles landlord tenant issues in most states, Maine included. The process for evicting people. When I was in New Hampshire, part of my duties as the chief deputy there were to oversee our civil process division. And I used to meet regularly with landlords. I had an entire program. That I went through and I actually taught landlord tenant law to the New Hampshire Sheriff's Association Civil Process Seminars. And you're absolutely right. If landlords are business people and not. Social workers, and I don't use that word disparagingly, but if they're business people, they handle these types of things. They do it appropriately. If they're of the social work event, they're going to sit back and they're going to listen to every excuse in the book and never get paid their rent. And the properties are going to be downgraded and demolished and it makes it so that they're going to lose all kinds of money and make it damn near impossible. To get rid of the tenant. So that would be an idea of the partners, I think, that we might want to involve in our community safety discussion. Going back briefly to the mental health issues, again, I don't want to say me, 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 but when I started my career. The State Hospital in Augusta, which I believe is now known as Riverbend, it's gone through several name changes. There were over 3,000 resident population of that hospital. There were over 3,000 resident population of that hospital. There are still that many people around and I'll tell you who deals with them on a daily basis is the Augusta Police Department. The, the police are the one agency that is consistently available to deal with emergencies. I mean, they're there. The 911 system has made it even easier. People know, people dial 911 to find out the time of day. It's become that easy for them. So what's happened over the years, the 3,000 population, the last I knew in Augusta, the resident population by court consent decree was 100 residents. So there's 2,900 people that are no longer being served inpatient at the hospital. But they're certainly around and about. You have a major veterans hospital within the confines of the city. They have a large mental health population as well. We, of the police agencies in Maine, we were probably some of the first and best trained mental health crisis responders that have ever come about. I don't see the police as being that, but because various government agencies have defunded the resources that would logically deal with these things, it's been left up to the police. It's the old adage, who, who are we going to call? I'll give it to police. Nobody else cares. We don't care. Give it to police. I don't think it's right that we remove resources from the police to deal with these issues. I think we need to bring back these resources and add them to our police, so they have other tools to work with. And one thing the chief mentioned and Councilor Jelineus mentioned, and I just want to chime in on this, the school resource officer situation. This, in my estimation, is one of the best things that has come about from community policing. Community policing is really not a buzzword to those agencies that have been doing it right along. And it certainly would appear to me, at least in the last few years, that Lewiston has been actively involved in community policing. The school resource officer is important in that. I, I go back to last century when I was in elementary school. We had an officer-friendly type program. The kids sat there and they were riveted at this guy. He had a dog and he had all sorts of fascinating things that, you know, when you're in the third, fourth, fifth grade, something like that, that interests you. That's when you get a hold of these kids and you make them a part of the solution, not letting them be a problem when they get to be teenagers and beyond. You've lost them by the time they're in upper middle school or high school, if they're, if they've had some type of interaction with the police that's negative in nature, you, you've lost them and it's very hard to get them back. They become the taxpayers that now are out there, the citizens that are out there crying, things like defund the police. So I think it's very important that we have school resource officers. I think a lot of the people do not understand the mission of, of a school resource officer. They're not there to be police officers. Yeah, they may be from time to time, but they're there to act as a positive influence on kids and, and hopefully get them to turn out to be decent, useful members of society, not somebody we have to deal with continually in another 10 years. I don't know if the chief agrees with me on that or not, but I think it's very important that we have these school resource officers. And I only hope that our school department continues to work with the city side and provide this type of a resource for the community. I thank you.
Thank you. Ed.
Yeah, just a few real quick comments. I mean, number one, I think I certainly, everybody agrees that the police department deals way too much with issues of mental health and substance abuse. The, the, the compounding factor there is that those people tend to recycle through the community over and over and over again. You know, I mean, we have the guy who's after Dennis right now to meet with him, who gets, stands in the middle of, of East Avenue and screams because he's, he has a psychotic problem. We pick him up, deal with him, he's right back again. So there's a systemic breakdown, as Lee mentioned here. And those people just keep recycling back and forth into the community rather than having their problems really dealt with. I don't know how you solve that problem. I mean, it obviously helps to have people who have qualifications working with the police to deal with these people. But that again is a Band-Aid, that these people do just tend to recycle back and, back and forth. Second, I will just reiterate and emphasize that Luke is exactly right. One of the biggest problems we have in certain parts of our community is the, is the landlord community that does not actively and aggressively manage their properties. That's compounded by the fact that as you have poor management, that affects other properties in the area and results in more poor management. That's something I think this community has fought for decades and it continues to be a problem that, that needs to be addressed. And I'm not quite sure how to address that. We've tried being tougher. We've tried all kinds of things. But when you have, you know, an absentee landlord who has a management company who only cares to put people in, in the apartments so he can collect rent, then you get the kinds of problems that, that we're talking about here. And then the last thing I want to mention is one of the things you haven't really hit on much tonight is that the big concern I've heard recently has been the increase in gun violence. And the chief's statistics show that very clearly, a 90% increase in gun situations in the last five years as compared to the prior five years. The chief is too politic to say this. I'm about to retire, so I can get away with it. A lot of that traces back to a change in state law that allows anyone to carry concealed. That is not a problem, and Chief will admit that's not a problem in a lot, large parts of this state, but it is a problem in a community like Lewiston, where in the past, people would not carry a gun because if they were carrying a gun and didn't have a permit for it, they would get, they would be subject to arrest. They didn't want to go to the police department to ask for a gun because a background check might produce some reasons to keep a close eye on those people. So that has contributed to the problem. Not saying it's the only cause of the problem. Certainly, it's related to drug trafficking and, and drug violence that goes along with it, but it hasn't helped the situation any in our community. I'll wait for the editorials in the paper tomorrow.
Thank you, Ed. You know, I had some things to say, but truly, councilors had some great comments tonight and, and they really covered just about everything. I will, I will add this, chief. You know, next, we're going to be doing a workshop with our Economic Development Department. And I'm hoping at some point, we can bring both departments together for another workshop. Because I truly think our police department is a partner in our economic development in our community. And I'm looking forward to the continued discussions over the next several months. Councilor Clement, if we could quickly add your commentary to Ed's commentary?
I just want to agree with City Administrator Barrett. But that's just another example of where we could involve our federal partners. Guns used in crime, I believe, chief, if I'm not mistaken, there probably is a superseding federal statute. If they would be willing to prosecute, most gun crimes federally, they're going to get some time out of that. And if they know that, that might make a difference. I don't know.
Well, we do try to do that and you will get more time in prison in the federal system for gun violence than you will in the state courts. And that's why I like to, I want to maintain those partnerships we have with our federal partners because having them involved or having my officers sworn in as special agents allows us to do that a lot easier. I mean, 20 years ago, it was not, very few cases ever went federally. But now it's, it happens a lot more frequently now that we work so closely with our federal partners.
Absolutely. I've always been of the mantra that there's enough bad guys out there for everybody to have a go at them. So let's combine our efforts and go for it.
Okay, Councilor Ray?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to apologize first because my computer exploded, so I missed a bit of the conversation. But in reference to school resource officers and my role on the school committee, the school committee was very clear of their support of that position, which I myself was dubious of until we saw a great presentation from the folks who are part of that program, SROs, and the relationships that they are really working hard to build with these students. And I had a constituent ask me and I asked Chief O'Malley, so I just wanted to, for the benefit of the public. So a constituent had asked if firearms were carried in school. And so I just wanted to give the chief a chance to answer that publicly.
Yes, our school resource officers carry their firearms in the schools.
And as a former police officer, I, you know, I would hate to be in a school and have some tragedy occur and have unarmed officers standing there. So it'd be worthy of discussion, but I think we have to look at this with a big picture lens that it's much more than about just police patrol in schools. It's about keeping our kids safe and introducing our kids to law enforcement officers in mostly a positive way. All right, any other questions or comments from the council of the chief? Okay, seeing now entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss labor negotiations regarding the Maine State Employees Association, Local 1989, Lewiston Public Works Unit, Local 1458, Lewiston Police Supervisory Command Unit and Lewiston Professional Technical Unit, Local 3855. Councilor, thank you.
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilor Clement. Madam Plurk?
Yes, Council from Word One?
Yes.
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
And Word Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. So do we have, I guess, do we have a session link that's been refreshed recently?
You, you, you received a, a link from me earlier. It was through a calendar invite, so you should have it in there, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Are we leading to another meeting?
Yes, Sophia. So you will go in. So Dennis sent a link earlier today. If you want to check your email and it would be directly from Dennis and it is a link to the executive session meeting. So you would exit out of this one and head into that one. Thanks, Sophia. See you later. You all set, Lee? Oh, you're muted. Sorry. Lee, you're muted, but if you'd like, Dennis can resend it to you if you'd like. Okay, I'll ask Dennis to resend it to you, Lee. Okay, can you exit out of this meeting? Okay, we, we can do that for you. So Matt, I think we're all set to exit out of this meeting. So just for the benefit of the public, that the city council meeting and workshop tonight has ended. The council has now voted to go into executive session, which is in a separate Zoom link, which is private and confidential. So includes the city council meeting this evening.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Matt.